All right, it is seven o'clock. We will call to order our Thursday, February twenty-third city council meeting. Let's start with roll call.
Councilman Becker.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Hartwick.
Here.
Councilman Schultz.
Here.
President Shear.
Here. Agenda item three is public hearings. This evening we have none. Agenda item four is public comment. As always, the city council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record when called upon. That would be your name, address, subject matter, and contact information. No action will be taken on any public comments unless the item is also elsewhere on the agenda. We have nobody signed up in person. So this will be a first call for public comment either in person or via Zoom. This is a second call for public comment. This is a third and final call for public comment. Seeing none, hearing none, we will move right along. Uh, agenda item number five is our consent agenda. As a reminder, the consent agenda that is outlined is presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. And your removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the council president.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. Agenda item six is petitions, requests, and communications. Six A is the review and possible action relating to a proclamation recognizing February seventh, twenty twenty-three as monarch pledge day in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Thank you. Um, through the National Wildlife Federation's mayor's monarch pledge, uh, cities and villages commit each year to create habitat and educate residents on how to make a difference uh, at home or in their community, uh, relating to, um, pollinators and, and encouraging, um, butterflies. Uh, so the first, for the first time, uh, last year in twenty twenty-two, the city of Fort Atkinson took the mayor's monarch pledge. The city, uh, has taken the pledge again in twenty twenty-three, and this, um, proclamation recognizes that pledge. The, it's not expected to have any financial impact, um, and staff does, uh, well, I will also say that monarch and pollinator-friendly demonstration gardens have been planted already at the Hord Museum and on the city's vacant land on Grove Street. So we, we are meeting the, um, the intent uh, of the, of the pledge. So staff does recommend that the council approve the proclamation for monarch pledge day to raise awareness about the issues pollinators face.
I move to approve the proclamation recognizing February seventh, twenty twenty-three as monarch pledge day in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Anyone interested in actually reading the proclamation that is available on the city's website? Uh, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Agenda item six B is the review and possible action relating to a proclamation recognizing February nineteenth through twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three as National Engineers Week in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Thank you. So February nineteen through twenty, uh, five, twenty twenty-three is recognized as Engineers Week or E-Week by the National Society of Professional Engineers. It was initiated in nineteen fifty-one, and it's dedicated to ensuring a diverse and well-educated future engineering workforce by increasing understanding of an interest in engineering and technology careers. Engineers use their scientific skills and specialized knowledge and abilities, uh, in creative and innovative ways to fill society's needs. The city's engineer does important work solving problems in the city and planning for the future. He's responsible for managing the city's utilities, road infrastructure, airport, and supervising staff in the public works department, among many other special projects and programs. City engineer Andy Selly is a valuable member of the city's management team and significantly contributes to the high quality of, uh, life in the city of Fort Atkinson. And I celebrated by buying him a sandwich for dinner tonight. So, um, thank you, uh, engineer Selly for all of your, your work. We appreciate you. Uh, so staff does recommend that the council approve the proclamation recognizing Engineers Week, uh, to recognize the great work done by the city's engineering department each day and, um, particularly recognize, uh, city engineer Andy Selly.
I move to approve the proclamation recognizing February nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three as National Engineers Week in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, I will not read the full proclamation, but I agree with the, uh, the statement, uh, whereas engineering has been called the invisible or stealth profession because everything around us and things we use every day have been engineered in some way, yet we may not see the engineers behind the scenes or know much about engineering. And I think that's often the case where we know, we know who you are, but we don't always get to see you and, and give you the credit you deserve. So thank you again.
I will also just add quickly that, um, uh, to encourage, um, interest in engineering and technology careers, we do have, uh, an intern uh, with us, um, Cal from, Cal Fettig from, um, the Fort Atkinson High School. Uh, and he's doing an amazing job, and I think he's got a really bright future, uh, in the engineering field, hopefully in municipal engineering, but, um, we'll see.
And if you want to work with Andy, there's an assistant engineering position available as well, so.
Once a year.
I was just gonna add kind of in, in conjunction with that, it, it seems funny to recognize our engineering department, um, because I think it's worth noting that Andy is solely our engineering department. Um, but I just wanted to add, I, Andy is one of, uh, a few people here at the city that I'm convinced has found some sort of superpower way to add more hours to their day. Because I'm just, I'm constantly blown away by how much you are actually responsible for and how much you actually accomplish within those responsibilities. Um, and I just think it's worth noting, I think because of some of the relationships you've built, like with Wisconsin DOT and, and things, there's, there's been a lot of money that you have gotten for our city through grants that you have applied for and, and done the work for, which you know only adds additional work to your plate once those come in. Um, and I just think those are important things for for the public to be aware of and, and for folks to recognize. So thank you.
I also'd like to compliment, uh, Mr. Selly on the vast amount of stuff that he does and that he does it in an extremely good manner, always. He never less astound. Thank you, Andy.
I can't really add much more than was already been said, but, uh, we've, we've gotten to work together for a long time now. You, you were hired, I think, not too long after I first came onto the city council, and I've been very fortunate to, to work with you for eight years and hopefully I'll be able to work with you for at least two more years. So, uh, we just really appreciate everything you do for the city and, uh, the engineering profession in general. Thanks.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. That takes us on to agenda item six C, which is the presentation on the twenty twenty-two Dwight Foster Public Library accomplishments.
Evening. Um, I was just gonna take a few moments just to sort of highlight a few of the things that were done at the library in the last year. In your packet, there's a one-page infographic. I didn't want to overwhelm you like I did with Mason earlier today by sending him a forty-page document on the orientation to the library board, but, um, some of the things on there, just to highlight for yourself and just for citizens in town, um, we serve an area of about twenty-one thousand people in our area surrounding us. And last year we circulated almost two hundred thousand items from the library. Um, budgetarily, there's a flashy big number on there that says, uh, basically we were able to save citizens a little over three million dollars. That is calculated based off of the physical circulation. So every month we circulate about twenty-five hundred digital items to folks, whether it's an audiobook or ebook that you're listening to in your car, and that number's understandably growing just since COVID. So just some fun, really quick, big numbers like that, that we're able to be really proud of. Um, we had a really large number of new cardholders this year, especially in surrounding areas because of just our openness and willingness to work with other communities, especially homeschool families. Um, we had a kiddo came in today. He was checking out a book, which I have an example over there of a wonder book. And he wanted, he didn't know how many more he could check out. And I said, you can check out two hundred and forty-nine more things right now. Um, and that has a large part of the staff that we have, uh, some of them have, uh, taught homeschool families. They have, uh, these connections to that, that group and surrounding communities. So there's a lot of other libraries that aren't willing or able to support that group. And so we do that. So that's why we have ridiculously high checkout limits for people. Um, even though there are a few people that check out a million movies at a time, too. Some of the other stuff that we're doing in and around the community that you might not be aware of is we do a tremendous amount of outreach, especially to assisted, uh, living facilities, not only in Fort Atkinson, but Fairhaven and Whitewater, where we take them large print materials. Um, and they just have them for as long as they want. And we do programs for those folks in those, in those environments, too. We also do, uh, physical home delivery for individuals, and we do memory care in cafes, which are if, um, you have family members that are suffering from Alzheimer's and memory loss. We've actually had more events now where those groups of people and the family members can actually get together in a support group. And so a lot of them have had amazing comments. I'd be happy to send and share with you where, um, I mean, I'm, I'm imagining I'm going to be a curmudgeonly old man, but they, the comments from folks about, you know, this is, my husband's a very different person from coming to this. He's found other people like him. We don't have a lot of support in our family for this type of stuff. So it's really genuinely heartwarming stuff. And a lot of this is done by staff that their job titles are not memory care librarian. They're the interlibrary loan librarian. They're the cataloging librarian. So they go to opportunities and all these other organizations in and around our communities to actually help these people because they have personal ties and family that they feel strongly for. Rebecca, I know, can tell you about StoryCorps. Um, if you've never heard of that, that's an oral history kind of project where generations of people or friends and family can get together and they can interview one another. So there's amazing stories that get recorded from, say, uh, Don Malar, who's a Korean War veteran. It comes in. He was just hilariously back from California for a month. We weren't sure if Don was coming back. But he came back and, and he was interviewed by a history professor about his experiences in Korea, which is not documented. Or multi-generational families about like, how did you meet dad? And, you know, all the stories that you would imagine kind of get told, which are hilarious and sad and kind of inspiring. And these, all these stories have been recorded. We've recorded the most in both counties around us and the library system that we're in. And they will be housed at the Library of Congress. So pretty soon we'll be able to start sharing those things and folks will be able to hear other stories about folks in their own community. Um, besides that, I mean, some of you've been to in-person to things like the four K art exhibit and all the stuff that we do physically in the library for programs and events. We did the food truck rally, which I know a number of you were at, and that hilariously is already being planned for next year. Um, hopefully we'll have sides of the road that we can use and stuff like that this year. Because it was really well attended, about eight, over eight hundred people came to events like that. So we really like doing events like that because it brings people from surrounding areas who may have no clue what libraries do, or some of the high school guys in the back and physically down there to see some of the other stuff that we actually have to offer and just be in the building. Because if you haven't been in in a while or haven't been by the fireplaces, it's an incredibly welcoming, nice environment. Um, where a lot of people who have begun working from home have started parking there, which is great. It's nice to see the thirty, forty-year-old crowd like myself. Um, and so much so that we used to have about fifty gigabytes of Wi-Fi data going out every month. We have about a terabyte and a half of data that go out every month because there's so many people using our rooms as workspaces. They get together AAU base. Other organizations have their board meetings in the building now very routinely. So it's, it's nice to be kind of a center point for different parts of the community. Just a couple of quick highlights for you. Any questions?
Oh, yeah. Um, I'm probably just being too picky on words, but you said that the, uh, food truck rally you're working on for next year? Is there not one for this year?
No, no, in twenty twenty-three. So in September, we're hoping to do it the same time year that we did it last year. So this year.
I was relieved. When you said next year, I thought, wait a minute, that means twenty twenty-four.
No, yeah. So we're hope to have like closer to fifteen to twenty trucks this year. Uh, everybody we talked to last year, they really enjoyed it.
I heard nothing but good about it.
The only bad thing was lines were long because there was a lot of interest. I think the food truck folks, they didn't understand there was any interest for stuff like that. And they were just bewildered why a library was interested in doing it. And it's like, well, this is why. Because there's all these people down here that would maybe not necessarily come down. Not everybody's a big avid food, you know, book reader and stuff like that. So but food will get everybody, especially goat curry from a Jamaican cart.
Thank you.
I think one other thing I, I've been able to recognize personally is, uh, the library is also a safe place that kids go like after school. Uh, while parents, you know, maybe have to work a couple of extra hours and, you know, have to pick up their kids somewhere. Um, and also the work that you did during the COVID pandemic to keep circulating content, uh, I think kept a lot of people, including me and my wife, sane. Uh, and also like the rooms that are available where people can, you know, rent, you know, meet and have, you know, not a bar setting as a place to meet and have a meeting. So I think that's just I can't see anything more like I can't, uh, you know, compliment the library anymore. And so, thank you very much.
I, I would agree with that as a, uh, a mom of two little ones who are very frequently at the library, whether with my husband and I or their grandparents.
Yeah.
Um, and then also as an entrepreneur, I'm one of those thirty, forty-somethings that sits up in that fireplace room. Um, the one question I did have, looking at the new cardholders, I know one of the awesome things you guys did last year was you started the hard distribution through the school districts.
Yeah.
Registration. So I was just curious if that was something that you're planning to continue.
We are planning to continue. We've, we've offered a lot of li, the other libraries in the system, we're in a system with Jefferson and Waukesha County Libraries. They're actually gonna meet next month at our library because they're all very curious about how the heck did we pull that off? And so, yeah, we are gonna continue to do that. We ended up, um, having it set up. So if you're enrolling your child in the school district, you could literally check a box to say, I'd like a card. So we sent nearly seven hundred and thirty-three cards out as a result of that. So we had, so we, I, I imagine the number's gonna be lower next year because it was the first time, but
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's in place. It's easy enough to do. And again, the school district was very easy. DJ Skull in particular was incredibly easy to work with for that, so. All right. Well, thank you for your time and thanks again for your support. I know it's not very often I stand up here and talk at you and it's usually asking for stuff, but do, I do appreciate every comments and time that you all spend in the library. It's very, very generous. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
All right, agenda item seven is resolutions and ordinances. This evening we have none. Agenda item eight is reports of officers, boards, and committees. Eight A is the city manager's report.
Thank you. Uh, so city staff from the public works, um, Parks and Rec and city manager's office, along with two of our city council members toured the Stoughton Public Works facility on February sixteenth. Uh, those public works director and street superintendent provided us with a, a great presentation relating to the planning, design, and construction process for their public works facility, which will likely be similar in size and scope to, to the city's project, uh, as well, as well as many tips and lessons learned uh, from their experience. So we were able to tour the facility, uh, which was extremely valuable, and, uh, we appreciate their willingness to share their process and, uh, excellent results with us. And I want to thank President Shear and Councilmember Eric Schultz for, uh, taking time out of your busy schedules to attend that tour and continue to engage in this planning process. So thank you for that. On February twentieth, the city hosted a meeting of elected and appointed municipal leaders in Jefferson County, as well as staff from the Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium, Consortium, and our state legislators at the library. The goal of that meeting was to connect, uh, local elected and appointed officials while discussing local economic development, uh, efforts and the need for more municipal revenue options. So uh, thank you to all who attended, especially, uh, to Representative Scott Johnson, Will Penterman, and Alan Schutt, uh, who, uh, are Assembly, uh, representatives, um, from Jefferson County. There was a primary election on February twenty-first. Thank you to Clerk Ebert and her staff, as well as all the election officials for their hard work in administering another open and transparent election. And thank you all who voted in the primary. Uh, the next election is April sixth, so mark your calendars for that. Um, our, oh, and April. April fourth. I said August sixth.
You said six.
Okay.
Something six.
Sorry. Anyway, I gotta give you the right date if I want everybody to vote, right? Sorry. April fourth. Okay. Sorry about that. Um, Parks and Recreation employee Josh Crandall submitted materials to the Wisconsin Sports Turf Managers Association, uh, Field of the Year competition for Jones Park, and the organization just announced that Jones Park, uh, received that Field of the Year award, which is given to only one, um, field in Wisconsin annually. So congrats to our park staff, especially Josh, for their continued efforts in caring uh, for the, uh, field and Jones Park in general and all of our parks. So thank you for that. I attended the twenty twenty-three Chief Executives Winter Workshops over the past few lunch hours, um, through, uh, over the last three days, uh, hosted by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. Session topics included local government leadership, capital improvements, and facility planning and housing needs and challenging challenges. Uh, earlier today, I, uh, attended the League's Urban Alliance meeting virtually due to the weather. The Urban Alliance is a subgroup of the League of Wisconsin Municipality members whose populations are over ten thousand people. We received an update from League staff relating to current legislation affecting municipalities, including a summary of the recent Wisconsin Supreme Court case, which dismantled the big box dark store argument for assessments. Uh, this was a big win for municipalities and all property taxpayers, as those big box retailers can no longer argue that the assessment should be based on the value of the building if it were vacant. So uh, we also received an update relating to potential additions to state shared revenue um, and bills relating to workforce housing, open records, and personal property tax. Uh, finally, um, President Shear and I have been working with the folks at UW Extension to organize a local government academy. The goal of this program, uh, will be to increase awareness of city operations, challenges, and goals, provide opportunities for civic engagement, uh, establish connections between residents and city-appointed and elected officials, and increase participant readiness to serve on boards, commissions, and the city council. So those sessions will start in July, and if you are interested in that sort of thing, uh, please keep an eye on the city's website, uh, and social media for the application and, um, process and dates. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, agenda item nine is unfinished business. This evening we have none. Uh, agenda item ten is new business. Ten A is the review and possible action relating to a proposal from Angus Young Architects for the design of a new Department of Public Works Operations Facility.
Okay. Evening. Thank you. Um, so this has been before you at, uh, the January meeting. So some of the background is on the third. Um, the council graciously approved our ability to go out and search, seek, uh, proposals for the design phase of this, um, public works, uh, facility. And, uh, so the staff prepared a, and released a, uh, plus request for proposal. And, uh, we released that to five local firms, and I also placed that on, on Quest to CDN, which is the, uh, open forum nationwide for, for firms, uh, of this nature. Um, the bidding process, uh, returned four submitted bids from firms in Janesville, Madison, Fond du Lac, and Milwaukee. And the firms were as follows: Angus Young out of Janesville, Ingrid Anderson out of, uh, Madison, Excel Engineering out of Fond du Lac, and Bloom Companies out of Milwaukee. Uh, all the firms, uh, of course, were, uh, provided very, very well-rounded proposals and appeared to have a very competent staff to address our needs. Um, however, there was a very wide range in fee totals, and the fee totals are shown in the memo, um, anywhere from four hundred and seventy-five thousand up to one million seventy-seven thousand. Um, so staff reached out, uh, and, and we met and, and decided to reach out to the two lowest bidders to kind of get a better feel for their thought process on the whole bid and the design of this, uh, facility. Um, staff then, uh, requested at the end of each meeting with the two lowest bidders to have them go back and kind of put a pencil to their bids and, and see if they could find some efficiencies for us and some savings. We then asked them to respond to us, uh, by Wednesday, February fifteenth, and the, uh, only architect that did respond was Angus Young Architects. And they did happen to find some savings for us. Their original bid was somewhere near four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, I believe. And they did find some savings down to four seventy-five. And again, that just came out of our discussion with them about, you know, uh, the definite needs of the city and the, the, the the long-term process that they'll go through. Um, so I evaluated each one of the proposals, uh, and sent my evaluations over to Andy. He had a chance to look at them also. The proposed project obviously represents a pretty significant, uh, expenditure for the city. It's a large investment. Um, and these, there are two phases to this work. The first phase being the project architectural design, and the second phase will be the, uh, obviously the, the construction side of things. Project architectural design and plan bid set preparation is budgeted, uh, in the twenty twenty-three capital improvement plan at three hundred thousand dollars, um, one hundred thousand of which was levied through the twenty twenty-two tax bills and, uh, as part of the, that, uh, CIP. And the remaining two hundred was shown as, uh, other fund sources in, in the table, uh, adjacent on page two twenty-five. Um, as also being proceeds from future borrowing. So right now the city intends to borrow funds for a construction of the public works facility in twenty twenty-four. Within eighteen months of that intended borrowing, the city can, council can spend funds and reimburse itself from proceeds with that borrowing. Um, if the proposal, if the proposal is approved, staff will intend to purchase or present the resolution for council consideration solidifying this intent. All the proposals received were significantly beyond three hundred thousand dollars budgeted for design. However, after we discussed, uh, the, and, and met with the firms and talked with other, uh, agencies, um, staff feels that the, the, the bidding for this project was, was, was fair, and we would, if we rebid, it would be, would get the same or similar results. Uh, so at this time, uh, staff would recommend the city council authorize, uh, city manager to execute a contract with Angus Young Architects in the amount not to exceed four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for architectural design plans and can, and construction bidding documents and specifications for a, uh, for the new proposed public works campus located in seven hundred James Place, uh, using one hundred thousand dollars from the twenty twenty-three CIP and three hundred and seventy-five thousand from the general fund balance with the intent to reimburse from the general fund through proceeds from twenty twenty-four borrowing. Um, inside your packet, I apologize, but I included everything that I received. So it's, it's fairly substantial. If you've got any questions, I'm certain, how, to the best I can answer them for you.
I've got a couple of questions. Um, the Excel um, quote, uh, included a line for reimbursables, which the other three I didn't see claimed. Um, I understand this to be like other additional costs with like driving to the site and back, etc.
Copies, yeah, copies, postage, that kind of thing. Uh, they all seemed, and I believe most of them did have a line item in there or, or a percentage in there somewhere in the, somewhere between the three and five thousand dollar range. Okay.
Um, based on everything I've seen, it looks like we're comparing apples to apples. Like there, it's not like one is offering something new above and beyond or more. Um, are we concerned that there, one thing caught my eye is that, uh, one of the quotes listed Phase One, and my question would be is are, are we, would we be facing possibly additional costs above and beyond this with like what, what did they mean by Phase One versus Phase Two?
I think they broke it out based upon how they, uh, as architects, look at the design process. So their phase one of that process was the, was the, I believe, the schematic design and then taking it to the, the final design. Um, so they broke it out between those two phases. However, their entire budget and the, the bid, um, indicated that, that those, those phases are all included. The things that are not included were labeled out as the construction side of things. So and I think all four firms had bid, broke that out, that there's no construction services at this point. And we felt it was too early to, to be asking for them to consider what construction phase costs would be, um, since we do not know what the construction cost will be at this point.
Tom, can you, assuming we move forward with this tonight, can you remind us what kind of timeline we're looking at for the process?
So the, the intended timeline is to have bid documents, the complete design, architectural design, and bid documents completed and prepared, ready to submit for, out to bid, um, in, by the fall. So I would say by September, October area, we would like to have those documents out. Every one of the bidding firms was aware of that timetable and did have a time, timeline within, kind of fell within that range. So full design within twenty twenty-three bid documents out in the fall to winter of twenty twenty-three and breaking ground sometime in the early, early twenty twenty-four.
I, I just wanted to add that I, I, I know s, you know, we've had some reactions to the cost of the project and everything, but what I'm seeing, I, I frankly think, uh, a, a bit of four hundred and seventy-five thousand is, is extremely competitive for what's taking place on the market these days for these types of projects. So I, I appreciate the very thorough process that was implemented with the, uh, getting the bids.
Thank you. It's been an education process for me. I was, you know, not, not aware of the, uh, initial cost, but I think that after discussing with many individuals in the industry, along with several other administrators, I think we, we, we really are getting a fair bid.
Um, can you, I, I just want to add, uh, thank you for including that, the rubric that was used to kind of evaluate the
Yeah.
proposals that was helpful to look at. Um, I am just curious how the three hundred thousand that was originally included in the CIP with the hundred thousand levied and the, the additional two hundred from the borrowing, how that number was kind of arrived at? Just because looking at these quotes now, that's obviously significantly under what these proposals actually came.
So the way that, the way that I came up with those original funds is looking at the, the total construction costs. I had the total construction cost calculated low. So the way that, the way that I came up with those original funds is looking at the the total construction costs. I had the total construction cost calculated lower than what the the, you know, the estimated cost, engineered cost would be. And when I did the original estimate for three hundred thousand, I was planning for a smaller total of of somewhere between nine and ten thou- ten million dollars as opposed to fifteen to twenty million dollars.
Uh, Tom, the uh billing of this requires that we uh acquisition some uh additional land. The road, some parking lot. Is that all lined up and uh done deals on those thing, on those issues?
As far as I'm aware, that the the adjacent lands, uh, we already have an uh, we put an offer to purchase out on that and that was agreed upon and that I believe is due to close in.
We're closing in April.
April, okay. So the adjacent lands are are secured, the the vacation of the roadway is the, will be the next step. That process will come out to all of the the public and to the council.
I was simply curious based on the idea that if we're gonna have a quote for it, that we need to have the place that we quoted for.
Yeah, yeah, we do have the space. We have secured that space. The road vacation will come next. That'll come before the council, of course. And I believe the public hearing process will be be uh sought after for that, too.
Not a question, but more of a comment. Um. We did get to tour the city of Stoughton's uh DPW, which was designed by Angus Young and they are very very clearly, very competent designers. Um, we were extremely impressed with their facility. Um, so I feel fairly confident uh moving forward with Angus Young, knowing that uh we will most likely get everything that we are looking for in our designs.
Rebecca, maybe this is a question for you, but any concern or impacts we need to be aware of that? Again, the original thought would be two hundred thousand from the general fund to be reimbursed through borrowing and now that would be closer to the three seventy-five.
Yeah, there, there are plenty of funds available uh in the general fund, fund balance to be able to pay it on the front end and then we would uh be reimbursing the general fund from the proceeds of borrowing.
Of how this could impact other things by that going up from the two hundred to the three seventy-five?
Uh, I mean, it it will impact the overall borrowing. The overall borrowing in twenty twenty-four will have to be increased. Um. That is also how the uh the council uh decided to pay for the additional land. Um, the land purchase for this project as well. So, so there will be uh, there's there impacts um uh for that borrowing, but but no, I'm not, I'm not concerned of of the general fund, fund balance fronting the the money for that.
Okay, thank you.
Think this has been a good presentation, good discussion. So I will move to a approve the proposal from Angus Young Architects for the design of a new public works operations facility. It costs not to exceed four hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or comments? I will say, um, this is not a small sum of money, but if you want to know why this money is being spent, I encourage you to stop down uh for a scheduled visit to our DPW. Um, that way you can can get a good grasp on why we are um, so aggressively looking at at fixing our Department of Public Works, so. Uh, we do have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ten B is the review and possible action relating to the alcohol beverage license application for Arson Fort Plaza LLC for the licensing period of February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. This application for the location of twelve twenty Janesville Avenue is currently being operated as Lions Quick Mart. Uh, Lions Quick Mart is selling some of their locations. Uh, Arson Fort Plaza is the purchaser. The sale of the property did go through January thirty-first. However, they're still operating as Lions Quick Mart until the council is able to approve the license. Uh, background check was successful. All documentation that was required was submitted. Um, confirmation of the seller's permit, the federal ID number. Um, they have uh uh kept a lot of the employees, which was great, and they've added a few new employees. Um, some employees that worked at uh different locations in line quick mark have come to the port location um for training and to continue employment with them. So, um, it sounds like the transition has gone very well. Um, the prorated alcohol fees will be paid upon uh license pickup tomorrow. Um, as we are at our quota for the class A license, I'll remind everyone, class A is where you consume the alcohol away from the premise. So Lions Quick Mart has a class A intoxicating liquor and class A fermented malt beverage license. Um, the license will be surrendered by Lions Quick Mart and then in turn a new license will be issued for us on um Fort Plaza and I think they'll be in bright and early eight o'clock tomorrow morning. Um, they also applied for a cigarette license, which as a reminder is not required uh to be approved by council, but again, as it is um, something that requires a legal um age for purchasers. I do present that to council, so they are aware. Uh, happy to answer any questions. If not, we'd be looking for approval of the license.
I move to approve the alcohol beverage license application for arson Fort Plaza LLC, the licensing period of February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Uh, ten C is the review and possible action relating to the state municipal agreement for South Main Street. And uh, wow, there we go. I'll try that again for the South Main Street pedestrian path.
Thank you. Uh, I believe council is aware uh of this. Uh, I know you're aware of the grant application uh some time ago, but I believe you're aware that we were awarded uh this application uh late uh last year. Uh, this is for a pedestrian pathway. Uh, it will connect to the pedestrian pathway of Rockwell Avenue uh and move down South Main Street. Currently looking at that potentially being on the east side, but we're certainly not uh wedded to anything until we get into design on that. Uh, we did reach out to the town of Koshkong uh to uh speak with them. Uh, obviously, South Main Street stops uh at the municipal limits uh short of Hackbarth Road. Um, and uh, the town uh would like to continue that pedestrian pathway uh along their property. So we're um, we're partnering on this uh particular um endeavor together. Uh, and they've uh reviewed all of these proposals and submitted a letter of support as the council did um for the grant. So the state municipal agreement is basically just kind of the contracts that we sign with the state. We've uh seen these before for Robert Street Bridge and Riverside Drive and things of that nature. Um, and so uh, it is, I will, I will call your attention to the fact that it is an estimate by the state. So uh uh, I am watching these things very closely uh as we've seen uh some changes to the Robert Street Bridge costs that were not necessarily in our favor. So um, we will uh, we'll stay on top of those things and make sure that we don't end up getting a few more bills than were anticipated from the DOT. Uh, but with that, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have regarding uh this uh state municipal agreement.
Do you know if the town of Koshkong's plan is to continue this path, you say onto their uh property? Have they taken it out to the park?
They uh had mentioned that in, I had a conversation with Bill Burlingame uh about this. Uh, he had mentioned that they had a plan um, to go across Hackbarth Road and to get back to Muskoskade Park, I think is the name of it. Um, but he didn't indicate whether this would actually be constructed uh associated with this project or not. So I know it's on their radar, but I don't know their their timing.
That's kind of a vast natural area back there that could be a lot of fun for the citizens to go see.
Yeah.
Andy, can you just confirm? So the the nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, that is a set number. It's not the percentage that's set. So like if the final cost do come in higher than the one point two million, we don't still get eighty percent of that from the grant. Like say it ends up coming in at one point six. Do we get eighty percent of one point six?
No. Great question. I should have mentioned that. So we are, we are set at one point two and we get eighty percent of the one point two million. So if we go to one point six, then that four hundred thousand dollars is all on us.
Okay.
And and I was pretty conservative in that one point two. So my anticipation is that we should be able to accommodate quite a bit of unknowns at this level, not having designed it uh within that. So that number is is high, I guess, and and um, purposefully so. So hopefully we're we're protected a bit there.
Great, thank you.
Can you tell us a little bit about timeline?
Ah, yes. Um, the uh, I I didn't write that down. It's in the memo. Uh, I know uh, we have to commence by twenty twenty-six and I believe we have to be finished by twenty twenty-nine. If I'm remem- remembering correctly, um, my intent with this is to um uh, the design of this is is on us, is on the city. We are not being compensated through the grant for design. My intent would be to uh move forward with design and utilize the annual street budget uh that we have, uh, because we have such a long timeline so that we can avoid borrowing for this, uh, if at all possible. Um, so we will likely commence design on this, uh, hopefully, uh, either towards the end of this year or in twenty twenty-four. Uh, to be able to kind of get our head wrapped around um the project. Uh, as I said, it could be a very simple project. There could be some complexities that we didn't anticipate. So we want to have plenty of time to be able to understand those and then budget for the construction. So uh, twenty twenty-six for sure, we have to start, uh, and that's the the most important deadline that we have. Uh, I would anticipate the project taking a year, uh, I'm sorry, a construction season. So if we began in, say, May, June of uh of a given year, we would finish by October of that same year.
Andy might have said it, uh, but I didn't see it in the packet. The path would be on the east side of South Main Street.
It's not, uh, it doesn't have to be. Um, so the concept is uh, South Main Street is uh much wider than we need it to be. So what we'll do is remove uh the curb and gutter on one side, narrow up the road and and take the path long, kind of that footprint that's left over. Um, it appears there are almost the same number of driveways that be in fact uh affected on the east side as the west side. Uh, the east side does hold an advantage. I believe when I was looking at it, the utility poles which are on both sides are slightly further back, I believe on the east side, which is why I said, well, we'll draw it for the grant application on the east side. But we're not wedded to whether it is on the east or west side. Uh, I think we'll look at it and design. Uh, we'll certainly uh look for some feedback from the neighbors um through that corridor and and try as much as we can to to um accommodate any, you know, particular desires to have it on one side or the other, but you know how that goes. So. Um, so yeah, we'll, we'll see which side of the road it it uh is best placed on.
Is it, my observation will also be that the east side has more setback to the homes that are along that side. So there would still be a, for the most part, greater distance from the path to the, to the uh citizens' homes?
Yeah, I do think uh towards the the far south end of South Main Street, we have those long lots. I don't, you know, just, just by memory, I think there may be a few more of those on the east side than on the west side. But as you get closer to the city and to the more urban development, I think the the houses are set back about the same through there. So it varies. And and there's a number of different, I think, um, criteria that may come into play as to which side we choose. Um, and that, that would be one of them to keep in mind.
Thank you.
Did the uh town express a certain reasoning for why they would like it to divert at Rigert?
Yeah, I I think it was uh better um matching up with where their reserved uh right of way was on the south side of Hackbarth Road to get back to Muskoskade Park. Um, and we talked early on about that. Uh, that's a, that will be a challenge uh because it is a, it would be a pedestrian crossing of Hackbarth uh at a uh, a three-way intersection, if you will. So it's not a, uh, from a motorist perspective, it's not a the best place to cross. We call them mid-block crossings in the city and they're to be avoided.
Yeah.
Um, so crossing at the uh intersection of Hackbarth uh and South Main would be ideal from a safety standpoint. Uh, that doesn't necessarily mean you can't cross at Rigor Road. Um, but you would look a little closer at the safety aspects of that and the site distances and things like that. So. Um, so I think either option will be explored. Um, and the uh, the town can make some decisions on on what works for them.
Well, thank you for pursuing this, Andy, and I think this just serves as one of those good times to to remind citizens to that when they see a headline of, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand being spent on a project like this, that although that is a large number, that spending is to allow us to get nine hundred and sixty-one thousand
Right.
from this grant. So it allows us to do a pretty massive project like this at an actual reasonable, doable investment from the city.
Yeah, and I should note, this grant program was set up for these pedestrian type projects. So it's very helpful for us. We spend all our money on roads. Um, I would love to put in more sidewalks and and things like that with our road money. Uh, but we just don't have the money. We need to fix up the roads first and that's always been our priority. So these grant opportunities are nice to to get at kind of the full gamut of right-of-way improvements that we all want to see. Um, and pedestrian paths sometimes take a backseat to that.
I move to approve the state municipal agreement for South Main Street pedestrian path and authorize the city manager to execute.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Agenda item ten D is the review and possible action relating to a certified survey map for CBF Investment Company LLC for the property located at fifteen oh four, fifteen twenty and fifteen thirty Madison Avenue.
Yeah, thank you. Um, this request was uh, was reviewed and approved by the planning commission at their meeting uh last week. This is the last uh parcel available within the Lexington Center Development, uh, as as it's been uh known for some time. Uh, the parcel itself has been uh purchased or will be purchased uh by Premier Bank. Um, we had uh the the preliminary certified survey uh met all of the criteria um for the uh, the city's side of things, except for three issues. Um, I think one of which has already been resolved. There is a, an easement on the north side uh of this that was necessary, uh, I think to accommodate a fiber optic line. It was the the high schools. Um, and then the other two were uh to include setback lines on the the CSM and show where the existing utilities are, both of which will be helpful to future owners and planning uh and citing buildings and things like that on the site. Um, you will note that the um, the area extending north of current uh Rena Avenue uh is within our officially mapped area. Uh, and CBF uh was um kind enough to reserve that as an outlot, uh, so that eighty-foot right-of-way is uh reserved. It's not dedicated to the city at this time. Um, the uh, the purchaser, a premier bank, um has indicated that there is uh an intention for that to uh, to be dedicated sometime in the future, but uh for the uh transaction that needs to occur between these parties, it wasn't uh timely, I guess, um, for this particular situation. So, um city staff uh approve, or I'm sorry, approve, recommend approval uh of the CSM uh out there on uh Doris Drive. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have with that request.
From what it sounds, uh, some comments I've heard, whether it's like on Facebook comments or whatever, and some concerns we heard is uh about development in this area is the traffic. And right now, um, traffic is uh limited to uh Bank Road and
Campus Drive.
Campus Drive. Um, and although this doesn't guarantee like, hey, this, you know, but this does take one step or keeps the option open to provide additional traffic flow options for that, that area. So.
Yep. Yeah, it's a uh points of ingress and egress, right? So getting in and out of a of a parcel um with the extension of Rena Avenue, which we we are looking into, but there's no timelines on that. Um, the opportunity at least will be one step closer to provide another access point to the high school campus.
Andy, can you just clarify? Is it standard for council to approve CSM changes before some of these additional kind of requirements are done? Like, is there a reason for the process to go that way as opposed to those adjustments being made and then?
Yeah, there are, uh, I'll, I'll be quite honest. Uh, we don't get full review of some of the smaller items done in time. So in the interest of trying to move these things along, uh, when they are fairly minor, like a setback line or something like that, the the final um, uh, stop in the process is the signature by the city, which could happen tomorrow. Um, what we will see before we sign it is that those setback lines are are in there. The easement is is in place and things like that. So they're kind of moving along in parallel. We would ideally like to have all this stuff tied up in a neat bow and and put in front of you as a finished product. Uh, but we have pretty consistently let smaller items like this move forward so that we can get the approvals taken care of and then they can work in parallel with the surveyor to draw up certain aspects of it.
Great, thank you.
I would move to approve a certified survey map for CBF Investment Company LLC for the property located at fifteen oh four, fifteen twenty and fifteen thirty Madison Avenue, subject to the conditions included in the staff report and the planned commission recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us along to agenda item number eleven, which is miscellaneous. This evening we have none. Agenda item twelve is claims appropriate appropriations and contract payments. Twelve A is the review and possible action relating to the verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and Authorization of Payments. Twelve A is the review and possible action relating to the verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and authorization of payment.
Move to approve the list of verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and authorized payment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker.
Aye.
Councilman Hartwich.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Schultz.
Aye.
President Shear.
Aye. That motion carries. Agenda item thirteen, the city council may consider a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to state statute nineteen point eight five one C to consider employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Tonight will be the annual performance review of the city manager. We do not intend to adjourn back into open session.
I move to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statute nineteen point eight five one E to conduct the annual performance evaluation of the city manager.
Second.
We have a motion and a couple of seconds. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker.
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Schultz.
Aye.
President Shear.
Aye. That motion carries. We are now adjourned into closed session.